Hey BA Tiger fans, now's the time to show your school spirit. Support your favorite school with the Broken Arrow School Pride debit card from TTCU Federal Credit Union. The only card that gives back to Broken Arrow every time you use it.
Since the program began, TTCU has donated over $350,000 to Broken Arrow Public Schools. That's a lot of support from fans just like you.
Whether you're a student, parent, or proud Tiger fan, your everyday purchases can make a difference.
With TTCU, you're not just banking, you're backing your school and local community. Join the thousands of TTCU members who are already using the Broken Arrow card.
It's super simple. Use your BA card and TTCU donates.
Thank you, TTCU, and thank you Tiger fans. Support our school with every purchase.
Hey Tiger fans, this year Broken Arrow is going cashless for all home varsity games.
That means all tickets are sold through GoFan. No paper tickets needed.
Debit and credit cards are still accepted at the gate.
But we still encourage you to download the GoFan app.
Have your tickets on your phone before you arrive so you can get through the gates faster.
And don't worry, our BA ticketing team will activate your ticket at the gate.
This is the fastest way to get in and skip the lines.
Remember to have your tickets ready on your phone.
Go cashless and see you at the game.
We have a TSA organization at our school, the Technology Student Association, and they have about 76 different competitions between middle school and high school every year. And they're all STEM related, and one of them happened to be vlogging. We have a group of students that really enjoys taking video and creating stories. And of the four kids, one of them happens to be my son. And so, we had talked a lot about it because he would help me do videos for my class and videos for other things. And so, he was one of the first people to say, hey, I'm really interested in this. And so, through him, he kind of assembled a little team with the different skill sets. People who, you know, like to do editing and people who like to write stories and script. So, the original prompt was about setting and achieving your goals. And so, they came up with this idea called the Goal Getters, where they would go around and find professionals in the field. So, they found a professional boxer, a published author, a retired Colonel, things like that. A two-time Teacher of the Year. And they interviewed them about these specific things that help people set and achieve their goals. We won at state and it was local, we familiar faces. But when we went to nationals and we were in there and you have representation from, you know, 50 states and multiple countries, and you're looking around, there are thousands of people. And you kind of, you get that feeling in your gut like, hey, are we, are we good enough for this? Like, we're bringing our best, but are we the best? And that's something that, you know, when you have that competitive spirit, you know, that can make or break you. So, they, they rose to that challenge for sure.
Hey guys, I'm Bryce Wheeler and we are the Anita Ridge Middle School Team who won the TSA Vlogging Championship. These are my teammates, Lucas Wheatley, Hayden Dumas, and Marshall Bowser. So, Lucas, tell us a little bit about your role on the team.
Me personally, I was kind of in charge of like product and material management. Like, say a tripod, bring the tripod, make sure it's all in the right spot, adjust any like parts that were not supposed to be the way they were.
Hayden, tell us about your role on the team.
My part, I did, I was in a lot of the videos. I did a lot of acting.
Marshall, tell us a little bit of your role on the team.
So, I was the editor and I edited our videos, shortened the clips, lengthened the clips, and put transitions in.
For me, this has helped me kind of see some of the opportunities I have in the future as this is like the new thing, you know, YouTubers and social media influencers. So, I can use this because this is our next step in the workforce.
I want to be a business owner, like whether it be like a trade business, just anything. You got to have videos to promote your business. The ways to heart is through the eyes, right? So, having these videos and having these opportunities to really video like a way to an audience, I guess is a way to say it. You could promote your business throughout that.
I think this would help with my career path because in the future, if I would like to be something like, run the social media for schools, kind of like Arrow Vision. You have to be able to like tell stories and make those videos. And I think vlogging, this event, we've learned how to do that stuff.
I think that this will help influence my career path because like a lot of businesses and places like use videos and like they edit them. And since I was our editor, I think that with some work and some like more buildup and more resilience, that I think I could be like pretty good in like YouTube videos or like wedding videos for and stuff like that.
Overall, it's been a really fun experience. I can't wait to see what we do in the future. But like Mr. Perry would always say, "The best is yet to come."
Our next bid up to you from the Hall of Fame is Randall King.
Special, just to be able to have my family here, first of all, that's always supported me. And just honored to be in this class with these coaches. There's some great coaches in this class. There's great coaches that are already in the Hall of Fame. And I just feel privileged to be in it. You know, I just knew that I was going to come in and work hard and try to do everything I could to be the best coach I possibly could be. And, and having great players helps that a lot. For me personally, it's awesome. Yeah, but nothing overcomes those state championship teams. And even teams that haven't won it, that's been really, really close and, and that have done a good job all throughout the years. And, and just, you know, the camaraderie that the teams have, that's awesome to see every year. Before me, Jim Hillman, he's also in this Hall of Fame. And being able to follow a guy like him and being mentored by him taught me a lot. Coach Norton, who used to be our pitching coach, he was with me for 21 years and he taught me unbelievable things. And just team wise, Broken Arrow is going to compete every year. And you know that because kids come in and they have high expectations. And they know the program has high expectations and it's important to them to succeed and to represent their community and their school. When I got to Broken Arrow, I was welcomed, you know, and, and couldn't be in a better place. Just the school, the athletic part of it, just the city. It's just awesome to be in this city and to be able to represent them and hopefully be successful as a coach and not only as a coach, but as a mentor. I'm very fortunate to have all the great players I've had, the great mentors and coaches I've had. And hopefully, we can continue the success.
For the full congratulatory message video and Coach King's reaction, find it on our Facebook page at BA Tiger Sports and on the Broken Arrow Public Schools YouTube channel. Each new school year brings more than a fresh start. It brings opportunity to shape lives, to build trust, and to make an impact that lasts far beyond the classroom. Here in Broken Arrow, we know that education isn't just what happens in textbooks or test scores. It's found in the moments, the conversations, the breakthroughs, the quiet support that helps a student keep going. Whether you drive a bus, teach a lesson, prepare a meal, coach a team, or keep our schools running, you are part of something bigger. Students find their voice in music, on the field, through leadership, service, and innovation. They challenge themselves, chase big ideas, and discover what they're truly capable of. And they don't do it alone. You help create the conditions where students feel safe, supported, and seen. That's where real learning begins, and our families know it. Remember, we passed the 2023 bond issue with 80% support from our community, which means they believe in what you are doing. We're not just working in a school system. We're building a future together. And in today's world, that matters more than ever. This year, we have a chance to change the story being told about public education, to shift the conversation from doubt to belief, from frustration to pride, to remind our communities and ourselves of the power we hold when we show up with purpose.
Let's make our story visible. Let's highlight our everyday wins. Let's celebrate our quiet heroes, our small victories and our big breakthroughs. Let's do a great job of telling our story, what's really happening in our schools each and every day.
Because when we share our story, we elevate our mission. We remind others and ourselves why this work matters, and we invite everyone to be a part of it. This is our year to lead with passion, to build with purpose, to share with pride the real story of public education in Broken Arrow. This is our story, one of tradition and transformation, of pride and progress, of excellence and heart. And now, we invite you to help us tell it. Let's tell it well.
And always remember, in Broken Arrow, the best is yet to come.
Oh yeah, that's a good one.
Hey Tiger fans, this year Broken Arrow is going cashless for all home varsity games.
That means all tickets are sold through GoFan. No paper tickets needed.
Debit and credit cards are still accepted at the gate.
But we still encourage you to download the GoFan app.
Have your tickets on your phone before you arrive so you can get through the gates faster.
And don't worry, our BA ticketing team will activate your ticket at the gate.
This is the fastest way to get in and skip the lines.
Remember to have your tickets ready on your phone.
Go cashless and see you at the game.
Hey BA Tiger fans, now's the time to show your school spirit. Support your favorite school with the Broken Arrow School Pride debit card from TTCU Federal Credit Union. The only card that gives back to Broken Arrow every time you use it.
Since the program began, TTCU has donated over $350,000 to Broken Arrow Public Schools. That's a lot of support from fans just like you.
Whether you're a student, parent, or proud Tiger fan, your everyday purchases can make a difference.
With TTCU, you're not just banking, you're backing your school and local community. Join the thousands of TTCU members who are already using the Broken Arrow card.
It's super simple. Use your BA card and TTCU donates.
Thank you, TTCU, and thank you Tiger fans. Support our school with every purchase.
Dr. Williams?
Yes.
Mrs. Taylor?
Yes.
Dr. Roulette?
Yes.
Mr. Cockrell? Mr. Allen?
Yes. Next item will be the moan of silence led by our board clerk, Ms. Brandi Roulette.
As we begin this meeting, let us pause for a 60-second moment of silence to reflect, meditate, pray, or engage in other silent activity. Thank you.
Okay, next item will be the pledge of allegiance. Will be led by August Anderson, a third grader at Rhodes Elementary.
Edge of Allegiance. Stand, salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, August.
Great job. How's your school year? Off to a good start?
Yeah, it's going off to a pretty good start.
Tell us about your, what you've learned so far, your favorite subject you enjoy studying, or do you like art or P or recess?
One of my favorite subjects is math.
That's awesome.
Yeah, we've been learning how to do multiplication, division.
That's great. Do you know like all your multiplication tables right now?
Sort of.
You want to get tested right now? I'm kidding, I'm kidding.
Well, I mean, we didn't have a test last Friday, so.
Awesome, awesome. That's impressive. I bet you know, I bet you know them a lot better than you think you do. Well, we're happy you came here tonight to help us out. Do you have your parents here you'd like to introduce for us or any friends?
In the very back.
And what are their names?
Brittany Anderson and Ryan Anderson.
All right.
Great job. Okay, next item will be the approval of the regular board meeting minutes from the August 11th meeting. Is there any discussion?
I make a motion to approve.
A second.
Motion a second. Please call the roll.
Dr. Williams?
Yes.
Mrs. Taylor?
Yes.
Dr. Roulette?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes, thank you. Next item, Mr. Perry.
Thank you. Two weeks ago, we had the pleasure of two big tours at the Vanguard Academy. One was Linda McMahon, who is the U.S. Secretary of Education. Found out on very short notice that she would be visiting Vanguard, wanted to see the academy. It was one of only two sites that she visited, Oklahoma. And it was just a great day. She was very impressed by our student leaders, administration there, and what was going on inside that building. And then, a couple of days later, the exact same week, we had our House of Representatives do what they're calling the Capital to City Tours, where they were coming from all over the state. We had about 25 House Representative members there. And they took a tour of Vanguard along with some manufacturing facilities in Broken Arrow. Out of those 25, the Speaker of the House, Kyle Hilbert, was there. And we got a lot of great feedback from that group also. But I want to take a minute tonight to highlight the students that were involved in those tours because it was so impressive. And I'd like to call them up here and have them introduce themselves and tell what maybe they, why they chose Vanguard or what they're taking a part in right now, and then what their future plans are. So, let's recognize them. Then I'd like to get a big picture with all of them at the end. But Jackson Mulcahy, if you want to, it's Jackson here. Yeah, come on up, come on up to the mic. Also have Sophia, Jacob, Lucy, Kaylee, and Genevieve come forward too. We'll get a couple of you up here. You might need to point that microphone back up towards you a little bit there.
Mr. Perry, on every visit I've been to the academy, Jackson has been there leading us around. And he probably needs a raise. Especially with what he had to do just with the U.S. Secretary coming to.
You felt a little pressure, I bet.
Oh yeah, I was definitely feeling pressure. It's weird because I was actually more nervous before it. But when I actually got to talking to them, I'm like, oh, these are just normal people, you know? Like, I can have a genuine conversation with them, have a good time. And that's what I thought was really special, is that these people care about Oklahoma, care about our nation. And I was happy to be a part of that.
Got to show off a little bit and tell the great things you're doing. Tell us what grade you're in and then your future plans.
So, I am a junior at Vanguard. And what I'm planning to do is to go to TU. And I'm wanting to study Business Administration and go into the Gulf Field.
Awesome. All right, great job. Sophia?
Hi there.
Hi. Did you enjoy the tour, giving the tour? A couple of them that have been on with you now?
Yes, sir. I really enjoyed giving that tour. It was a very eye-opening experience and a great time to make good connections with people who make decisions about what we do here at Vanguard.
That's right. Good. What are your future plans? What would you like to do?
I plan to major in political science, ideally at Ithaca College up in New York. And in the future, I plan to go into politics myself.
Awesome. Did you get a chance to talk to any of them?
Yes, sir, I did. I got some business cards too.
You're already a politician then. Good job. All right, thank you. Jacob?
Hey.
What grade are you in and what are your future plans?
Yeah, okay. I'm a junior here at Vanguard. I've always looked into, it's about sixth grade, I've been looking into the engineering field. Schools like OSU, TU, I've looked into Missouri S&amp;T, just kind of opened some options, see where I'd like to go with this.
Awesome. Did anything stand out to you on the tour? Anything that you really enjoyed?
I liked how fascinated some of the people were with what we do here, not just, oh, there's a school here, okay. It's really wanted to get to know us and what exactly goes on here.
Awesome. Good job. Thank you. Lucy?
I'm a junior and I'm planning to go to Tulsa Tech and do the cosmetology program there.
Awesome. How was your tour experience? Did you get to interact with them a lot?
Yeah, I love doing the tours personally. Like, I love Vanguard so much. It's so much fun for me to show it off to everyone and see how excited everyone is and how cool they think it is. So, I love it.
Awesome. What do you think they're most amazed about usually?
I think they're most amazed about how we get to actually do stuff and we're not stuck behind a computer and how we build relationships with everybody. We don't just blend into the background like at the high school.
Love it, love it. Kaylee?
Hey, how are you?
You're great.
I'm a senior at Vanguard and I plan to be a nurse practitioner. I don't know what field I want to specialize in yet, but I plan to go to OSU to get my undergrad and then hopefully go to the Alice Walton School of Medicine up in Arkansas. It's a really cool, innovative medical school.
Were you able to share that, your career field, with any of the legislators?
I sure did share that with some of the legislators.
That is a workforce need in Oklahoma right now, so.
Yes.
All right. Is Genevieve, is she here? I believe so. Okay. Ross, Sophia, and Tiffany, are you here to come forward? Lincoln, Eli, are either of you here? Come on up. Awesome, go ahead.
Hello, my name's Sophia. I'm a senior at Vanguard. What I'm wanting to work in is also working up to be a nurse practitioner as well in the labor and delivery field. I thought that the coolest thing about leading those tours was kind of like Jackson said, that they're just normal people and how fascinated they were with just what we do on our daily basis and how we directly impact our community.
Awesome. Good job. Good job.
Hi, I'm Tiffany. So, I'm currently a junior in the expo program at Vanguard. And what I want to do when I grow up is hopefully double major in musical theater and then also journalism to eventually be a newscaster. And a lot about Vanguard that's actually helped me is we get to experience a lot of different fields. And a reason I really want to be a newscaster, and I've, I've done so many projects. And I've actually just really enjoyed loving being on camera and talking and sharing other people's views and my own, so.
Awesome. Looks like you're ready.
Hi, so I'm Eli. I'm a junior at Vanguard. Wow, that's weird to say. My favorite thing about like being able to have people come in and actually see everything is the fact that everything that we take for granted, everything that we just do out of habit and pretty much learned at Vanguard is so out there and so different from anything else that they've ever seen.
Talk about what you shared with the legislators and Secretary McMahon.
I've been, generally, my part is more about like designing and talking about student voice and choice and assignments through pretty much as long as we can explain or show or give an example of how we're supposed to cover this principle. So, say my Pythagorean theorem proof. I 3D modeled and designed a transforming set of blocks that you could actually unfold and put together to say that a squared, a squared plus b squared equals c squared.
Love it. Yeah, I think they were pretty intrigued by that.
Eli, you did have a challenge though, didn't you? What'd you find out?
Well, I found out I was doing it about 30 minutes beforehand.
You had a, you had all, you were having problems getting on your, you said you had an issue getting glue.
Uh, yeah. I, I had a slight adventure going into that. The previous model got thrown away and I kind of had to run all over Broken Arrow to try and get it and try and get glue during lunch.
It worked out?
Yeah.
All right, next.
Hi, my name's Lincoln. I'm a junior. And I was talking about the aviation program. So, I thought it was just really cool to see them all here about the aviation. I mean, aviation is the second biggest field in Oklahoma, so.
And talk about your experience with drones and what you hope to achieve here soon.
Yeah, so I'm taking Aviation 3, so I'm able to get my Part 107 license or my commercial drone pilots license. And like I said, Oklahoma is the second largest industry in, sorry. Aviation is the second largest industry in Oklahoma, so I'm really hoping to go into an engineering field to do with drones.
Awesome. Have you ever crashed one before?
I have.
Well, great job. And I know, again, they were very locked into that part of it. And they wanted to know what we're doing as a district to grow that workforce field, so great job.
Thank you.
Awesome. Ava, Zoe, and Leila, three students that spoke about FFA and shared their experiences at Vanguard and what they do.
Yes, sir. My name is Ava Thompson and I am a senior now here at Broken Arrow. I used to go to Vanguard, but I switched over to early college. I would say my favorite part, just like Eli said a little bit ago, talking about all the equipment and all the stuff and everything that we do there really points out how lucky I am to be able to use all that stuff and be able to even teach other people about it.
Awesome. Did a great job. Did a great job.
Hello, my name is Zoe Lynn Harris and I am the FFA Chapter President. What my favorite part was, oh, I'm a senior as well and used to be Vanguard student, but now I'm doing college classes online. My favorite part was I've, through FFA, been able to meet so many of these legislators, whether it was paging or going to the Capitol for different FFA things. So my favorite thing was getting to show them our program and what's so special about it.
Awesome. Great job.
Hi, my name's Leila Kidd. I'm a Broken Arrow Vanguard senior as well as a student in the Broken Arrow FFA Chapter. My favorite part about the tours was probably just getting to explain that what you put in is what you get out. I'm not a family that comes from an agricultural background, but I was able to show that, kind of like that the classroom goes beyond four walls and that, that's kind of how Vanguard and FFA works too. And that's something I'm proud of and proud to be the backbone of America.
Awesome. And you gave Secretary McMahon, you all made a, can you talk about what the gift you gave her?
Yeah, so we have a plasma table that just really just uses high-power heat to cut out a lot of different things. And Mason Silver, he was a senior last year, he helped get it up and running and I was the only person he taught how to use. So I, I cut out a little Broken Arrow logo inside of an FFA emblem and she really thought that was cool.
That's great, that's great. Good job.
Now, do any of you, the three of you, want to go into agriculture later?
Yeah.
Okay, that's awesome. We need it.
Awesome. Jillian and Henry, you here?
There's one.
All right. These next two, what was really special is we didn't find out till 6 o'clock the evening before that the US Secretary of Education would be visiting the next afternoon and around, it was about noon time, 11 o'clock. And so a lot of work with our team, our communications team to be prepared. Our grounds crew did a lot of work and we were scrambling. And the amazing thing about these two is I called Mr. Rice to come out and pull some weeds that were kind of overgrown summertime at the month. And Jillian walked by and saw them doing it. You know what she did? She stopped and helped and started pulling weeds along with them. So that is, just tells you character right there. So talk about, you walked up and saw them and what made you jump in there?
They just looked like everyone had been putting a lot of effort into like help get ready for the tours and they were just out there doing it and it was pretty hot and they were almost done. I was walking to lunch and I had time, so just thought we'd stop and help.
That is awesome. That is awesome. That's above and beyond. That's something Mr. Allen, you know, came into me and said, we need to recognize these two students. So talk about what year you're in and what your future plans are too.
I'm a 10th grader in the Expo Program at Vanguard Academy and my future plan is I hope to pursue a career in interior design.
Awesome. Did you know anything about the Vanguard Academy before you came into it? Our dad, Jason Jadamski back there, is the one, our first principal of the Vanguard Academy and helped open it up and put us on the right track. So that's just indicative of you representing him, what he's preached to the students all these years. But as a board, you would be very proud of these students and what they did. Those two days, it was a lot of pressure, a lot of stress, and they rose to the occasion and really exceeded the bar for what we had set out for them. So let's all give them a.
One of the tales to me that stood out was Ms. McMahon thought that was a charter school. She didn't know it was a public school that where you guys were doing your thing at. It was very impressive that it wasn't a private charter school. So just kudos to you, the entire staff. I mean, it was, it was two great days. You made us very proud.
That's awesome. Let's give them a hand. Great job.
Now, you're welcome to stay the whole meeting if you want.
As they all get up.
Not tonight.
We knew they were smiling.
Yeah. All right, next item, Mr. Dunn.
Yes, sir. I want to be like those students when I grow up. Tonight's just information only. Mr. Perry, President Allen, members of the board, good evening. Tonight, we are going to announce our graduation date, which is slated this year for May the 18th. It's a Monday, it's the corresponding date from last year. There's a group at the high school that takes a look at the graduation date this time of year, every year, looking at the advanced placement calendar, the school instructional calendar, the TCC graduation, different OSSAA spring activities. And this is the date that, that to our knowledge doesn't have any conflict. And so it's a Monday, May the 18th. The 19th and 20th are reserved for contingency dates should we have any spring Oklahoma inclement weather. Project graduation is scheduled for the 18th as well. And in the event that we had to move graduation, we would just work with our vendors who are already signed up for Project Grad to make sure they can, you know, be flexible enough to, to move their date as well. And most of them will be able to do that. Just want to bring that information to you. There's no action tonight. Just wanted to report that out. Thank you.
Thank you. Next item, comments from the public? We have none. Next item will be general consent, number nine through 102. Any discussion?
I make a motion to approve.
Motion is second, please call the roll.
Dr. Williams?
Yes.
Mrs. Taylor?
Yes.
Dr. Roulette?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes. Next item, Mr. Stecker.
Good evening, everyone. I'm here tonight seeking your approval on the adoption of Board of Education Policy 5335. This is our tuition reimbursement, excuse me, policy. This is actually new to the, to the district. We've had a program or a procedure in the past, but we felt like it needed to become a board policy. With also, we've done some modernization of this in the past. If you had a bachelor's degree, you had to be working on advanced like a master's degree. But emergency certification nowadays, a lot of a bachelor's degree, they're working for their standard certification. So with this new policy, they'd be eligible for that.
Great. Any questions or discussion?
I make a motion to approve. A second.
Motion is second, please call the roll.
Dr. Williams?
Yes.
Mrs. Taylor?
Yes.
Dr. Roulette?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes. Next item, Ms. Ena.
Good evening, President Allen, Mr. Perry, members of the board. Tonight, I am seeking your approval for the ratification of the negotiated agreement between the district and BAEA for the 25-26 school year. I'd like to start off by recognizing BAEA and the negotiations team led by Ms. Wallace. The district and the association had a very collaborative, successful negotiation season and we appreciate their support and feedback throughout that process. Really, the highlights of our negotiation includes a $100 increase to every certified step in the compensation schedule, some modifications to the extra duty stipends, and no language changes this year.
Any questions or discussion?
I'll make a motion to approve. A second.
Motion is second, please call the roll.
Dr. Williams?
Yes.
Mrs. Taylor?
Yes.
Dr. Roulette?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes. Ms. Ena.
My next item this evening is seeking your approval on the adoption of the 25-26 operating budget for the district. Really, not a whole lot of substantive changes. I'll kind of go over each fund, but to begin, the focus of our 25-26 budget is ensuring that resources are managed effectively and responsibly to achieve the highest level of student and classroom success. And this budget was compiled and put together with the forethought of the district's strategic focus to ensure that every student learns, every student is prepared, every student belongs, and every employee is valued. Highlights of the general fund budget include the one-time returning stipend of 3%, one-time Christmas stipend of 2%, the salary adjustments that we just approved in the negotiated agreement, in addition to the dollar increase for classroom support personnel that was approved earlier this summer. Finally, our administrative costs for the 24-25 school year ended at 3.57%, which is under the regulatory 5% cap. And I'd just like to kind of explain what goes into our administrative cost percentage. Yes, it includes the typical administrative costs that you would expect for superintendent costs, our typical administrators. But there are also other costs that are driven by our Oklahoma Cost Accounting System coding through our functions and our job class that go into that percentage. Job classifications like bookkeeping, accounting functions, supervisory roles, coordinator roles, so it goes beyond just what we would consider typical administrative costs.
Thank you for that information, Emily.
Absolutely. It is a point of pride that we stay well below that percentage and our goal is always to try and keep as much of our resources in the classroom and I think this percentage demonstrates that. So the proposed revenue budget for general fund, not a lot of changes this year. The main change or expectation will come in January when the district receives our midterm allocation, which is driven off our official October 1 accredited numbers. And so that's really the only area that we're, could see some fluctuation. Our ad valorem growth continues to remain strong as we continue to grow 6% to 7% across the board in both counties. For our general fund expenditure budget, we are proposing $195 million this year. That is up from $192 million from the previous fiscal year. This is primarily for the step increases, the salary increases that were put in place along with some other new federal grants that were received this year. Building fund, the main new source of revenue for our building fund the past couple of years is that red-bud state funding that the district has received and that's calculated off district average daily attendance. As you can see, that's been quite a revenue boost in our building fund and we are very grateful to our legislators for not only approving that source of funding, but also opening the flexibility for how those funds can be used. I say a lot that, yes, funding is important to districts, but oftentimes it's the flexibility on how to use those funds that are vital to making sure those resources are used effectively. On the expenditure side, we're proposing $20.5 million in building fund, again, primarily to utilize some of those red buds funds for capital improvements and other projects throughout the year. In child nutrition, not a whole lot of changes in this fund for the year. We'll propose a flat revenue budget and a flat expenditure budget at 16 and a half million. Ms. McNally and her team have some plans for some one-time equipment upgrades and lifecycle replacements, and so a lot of that will go into the property fixed asset line item. Happy to answer any questions about the operating budget.
I have one, Emily, just for, just from my knowledge. I'm not a math person, so I ask Emily a lot of questions. When we go back to the general fund, could you talk through like what's the difference between state sources and state aid? So it looks like those are, especially state aids, a significant portion of that.
They are. So our state aid is our foundation and incentive dollars that we receive through our weighted ADM calculation that's driven off our student count. Other state sources include our flexible benefit allowance, any other state line items that are included in the state's activity budget like our SRA funding, textbooks, ACE allocations, anything like that are considered state funding sources. But primarily, it's that flexible benefit allowance that is paid to our employees as a fringe benefit.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? This is an action item, excuse me.
I make a motion to approve. A second.
Motion is second, please call the roll.
My computer's stuck. Trying to make it go here, okay. Okay, Dr. Williams?
Yes.
Mrs. Taylor?
Yes.
Dr. Roulette?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes, thank you. Next item, Mr. Leach.
Good evening, President Allen, Mr. Perry, members of the board. Tonight, I bring for your approval, recommend for your approval, change order number one to Key Construction's contract to the Sequoia 8th Grade Academy project, resulting in a net decrease of $1,247,840.83 to Key's contract dated May 9th, 2022. The decrease is due to unused contingency and allowances during the project.
I love that.
That happened a while.
I bet we don't have anywhere to spend that money.
What hap, like what hap, why? What happened? Why are we getting, why the decrease?
So the, the construction management contracts always carry some allowances and some contingency for unknowns during the bidding process. And so this is, a lot of those were unused on this project, so we get them back instead of the contractor being able to keep those funds.
Cool, thank you.
Any other questions?
I make a motion to approve. Gladly second.
Motion is second, please call the roll.
Dr. Williams?
Yes.
Mrs. Taylor?
Yes.
Dr. Roulette?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes, Dr. James.
Good evening, President Allen, board members, Mr. Perry. Today, I am presenting for your approval, kind of for your vote, to approve our virtual instruction plan. A little bit of background for this, we have a Senate Bill 758 that allow, will no longer allow us to use virtual instruction to count toward our instructional days. So currently, just a little background, we have our Distance Learning Fridays built in that allow us for that collaboration time, our planning, our professional development, while we provide instruction virtually to our students. That day would count on our calendar as an instructional day. Unfortunately, Senate Bill 758 was passed and it has restricted us to only two virtual days, beginning next year, only if the state, if the governor states that there is a state of emergency. So we're required to put forth a virtual plan for the use of those two days, but only upon the time that's needed if there was a, if we had tornado or something that prevented us from actually having class and the governor recognized it as a state of emergency.
Can you talk a little bit about, you said unfortunately, we're going to lose those virtual days and how Broken Arrow Public Schools uses those and why we're disappointed in that?
Absolutely. Right now, in our argument when we, our debate, when we went to the last session, not this previous session, the session before, and we visited with the senator who wrote this legislation, was the fact that we have days built in and that we can focus strictly on our teachers and our staff to provide instructional development. The number of teachers that we have, they're either emergency certified who are adjuncted in, that means they've had no curriculum instructional education courses. So it allows us those times to build in during that the year, and we felt like there were six days that we use a majority of that time, that we feel like we are able to get in front of that staff. that we feel like we are able to get in front of that staff, grow their capacity to be the best instructor in the classroom. And that's what, you know, we shared with the senators that passed that, is that we understand the best place for students is to be in the classroom, in front of our teachers. But the next best thing is to ensure that the teachers that are in that classroom are the best teachers who are prepared, who we have provide professional development and, you know, that they're able to provide that best instruction. Because we could be in school three hundred sixty-five days, but if our teachers aren't at the most equipped, we're going to struggle to do that. Unfortunately, when we visited with them, their pushback was that there are some districts that they felt abused the virtual days and that they were taking sometimes up to forty days for the year that were virtually counting it towards their instructional calendar. We can't speak to that. What we could speak to was that we had a framework, we had high expectations for our teachers. We laid out what the professional development was, what we were expecting from that. Attendance was mandatory. And then we also built in time of the day for teachers to converse back and forth with their students through Canvas to ensure that they were answering any questions they had when they were working on their instruction. So I, we do feel like it's a step backwards that we're losing that valuable time. Anything outside of the contract day for staff, if we're requiring them to attend PD, it's going to cost us money. We're going to have to pay for that time. And I understand that. Nobody wants to work for free. But it will be a struggle to get that. A lot of people outside the contract, they have kids, they have activities, they have other requirements that require them to be away from maybe the professional development that we could offer after their contract hours. So it will kind of tie our hands. The second piece to that as well, another virtual day that we use is for testing of our juniors. We are required to provide ACT testing for all of our juniors in order for them to graduate from high school. And to get fourteen hundred students tested on the ACT, which is probably three and a half to four hours long, provide the accommodations that we're required to do, provide the classroom size of testing, requires almost all of our staff from the high school to accomplish. So that will be another stress that I think will be placed on our staff without the virtual day options that we've had.
Any other questions?
Was there any feedback from other representatives, senators that understood our position?
They did. I mean, they, they understood and see the need. I think they felt, what I kind of gathered from what they gave to us is that there were just too many people taking advantage of that and they felt like they needed to be in class. And we told them, we totally agree. And we were only using six days for that, not, you know, as many days as they had said the others were doing. But they agreed, but I think they just felt like it was too important. They needed to legislate it. I think that's where they felt like they're at a point to do that. When we shared them our framework for what we do for distance learning, they said not one other school district had ever been able to provide any outline or of expectations or an overview of what those virtual days look like. So I felt that was a huge win for us. And so I was like, well, instead of dictating or not allowing us to do what's working, why don't you place accountability pieces on other districts that you feel may not be doing that? But at the time, I think the discussion was, they felt like, no, we need to legislate this. We want students in classes.
Is this plan that you're presenting, I guess, could you walk us through? Is there anything different from how we've been using them or what?
Yeah, it's not, well, it's not as in-depth. They wanted us, it has to be approved by you first at this board level. Then we'll provide it to the State Department of Education. And then they will, we have to have it presented to them by November the first and they'll take a vote on that. The only expectations they had for us really was that we ensured our needs of technology, which were one-to-one, six twelve, and we're one to stay at the elementary level with ability to check out those devices as needed. They wanted to ensure we could provide food for those days and bus transportation. So I just kind of, when we looked at our plan, our team reviewed it, and we basically just hit on all those pieces. We told them that the instruction will be delivered through our Canvas, just as we do now, kind of outlined that. They didn't ask for as much details as what's provided in our framework, I felt like.
Do we know if, like, if they don't approve it, is there an appeals process or is it just?
If they do not approve it, they'll send it back to us with what they want us to include. We'll go back and edit that, make those changes. I'll have to bring it back to you guys to consider again and we'll send forward. This is the first time I've asked around other individuals when I was at the virtual, attended legislative thing. I kind of asked around about that with, they thought, everybody's kind of like us. They're just like, we're just going to submit something and see what this, where it takes us so that we can get the feedback we need.
It's the state board that's voting.
Any other questions? This is another action item.
I make a motion to approve.
A second.
Motion is second. Please call the roll.
Dr. Williams?
Yes.
Mrs. Taylor?
Yes.
Dr. Roulette?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes. Next item to new business, we have none. Next item will be moved to executive session.
I motion that we move to executive session.
A second.
Motion is second. Call the roll, please.
Dr. Williams?
Yes.
Mrs. Taylor?
Yes.
Dr. Roulette?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes, thank you.